Yeah, I'll start. Burl, thank you very much. Thanks, everyone for being here. I know we have many viewers on YouTube, so thanks for being there to, as we talk about our redistricting plan tonight. It's it's an exciting time in our district. And as you know, we're growing in Gehanna at an accelerating rate. This growth brings excitement and change. Over the next few years, we will be welcoming many new families into our district and phase one and two of our master facilities plan will allow us to increase capacity and add learning spaces to accommodate this growth. As superintendent, it's my responsibility to make sure we accommodate the growth we are experiencing. To that end, it is important that we assign students and staff in an appropriate way to ensure our schools are not overcrowded and that learning can flourish for all of our students and all of our buildings. Since December, our redistricting committee comprised of thirteen committee members across the district. So we tried to represent every single school in our district. It met seven times to examine current attendance boundaries, enrollment projections, feeder patterns, and review community feedback. The committee also hosted two live feedback sessions to listen to our community to ensure the process was deliberative and that the community members had a voice. The committee worked very hard to create a plan that was the best for our district for the next decade or so and beyond. And it was really, really important to the committee that they take their time and do this in the most intelligent and thoughtful way possible. So we were going to unveil the plan in March, but instead we took some time to rethink things. The committee revisited some things. And the plan we're going to talk about tonight is the result of that work. We know that redistricting is a very difficult process. The great thing about our school district is all of our schools are fantastic. Our teachers in our schools really engage with kids and parents and students build relationships and they don't want to leave a particular school they feel comfortable with. And we know this process is not easy. But we've worked to take all of this into consideration in this redistricting plan. Yet we know some will be unhappy. But we will work with families to do the best we can to make the transition that we're going to make as easy and thoughtful and caring as we possibly can. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Scott Leopold with Cooperative Strategies. Scott leads redistricting efforts across the country. He's been doing this a long time. And many districts that are growing in central Ohio, Hilliard, Olentangie, and Gehanna and many others use cooperative strategies and Scott as they navigate through the difficult redistricting process. So Scott, I'm gonna turn it over to you and we'll go through a presentation and talk about all the things the committee considered as they developed a plan that was best for our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I'll just kind of go through our agenda for this presentation. We'll briefly review the process, make sure that we understand the why. You know, for some of the people that are viewing online. We'll go through some background information. We'll review the options very quickly that we presented to the community initially, those five options that we had. And the community feedback that we have that's associated with that. We'll then go through the final redistricting plan and then we'll talk about next steps. Here's the overall process. This is what we followed, you know, from the beginning in the fall. We kicked off, we established our committee, we talked about some guiding principles, we got some feedback from the community around that that we used to kind of serve as a barometer for how the community may react to certain types of options. We then began to develop a series of options. We had a lot of meetings where we just met with the committee and we we played with the maps. We tried to see what moving, you know, one neighborhood to one school may have had as far as impacting utilization demographics and those types of things. Once we had those five options that we had flushed out and, you know, provided some context for, we launched an interactive survey for the community to provide feedback. And we had some supplemental focus groups or question and answer sessions where people could kind of get some live response on that. We spent a lot of time reviewing that information. And that's when we're coming to you. That's why we're coming to you with that, those plans today. Understanding the why, big drivers that we have here, Lincoln Elementary, of course, is being replaced on a new site with additional capacity. We wanted to explore options to align feeder patterns and remove detached areas. And I'll talk about that as we get further into the presentation. We wanted to make deliberative changes that could accommodate future growth and additional capacity. So here's our current boundaries. Let me switch over my laser pointer here. So I'm just going to kind of start from Goshen Lane. And then I'll kind of work counterclockwise. And so the pink area is our current Goshen Lane boundary. And as you can see, we have two detached zones that are located, you know, in the southern portion of the district that are currently zoned all the way to Goshen Lane. The yellow is Lincoln Elementary. You can see the current Lincoln location and the new location. Blacklick Elementary is in green, the High Point Elementary is in orange, Jefferson in blue, Chapelfield in purple, Royal Manor in the light pink. You can see the thick dark lines. Those represent our current middle school boundaries. And so looking at this, you can see this area over here feeds to Middle School West. And then if we look at, you know, here's our line here, this is the line that's between Middle School East and Middle School South. So here's our Middle School East Zone. Here's our Middle School South Zone. And so that just kind of shows what our current current situation is that we're dealing with. This is a slide that we pulled from our demographic presentation or demographic study that we did in 2018, 19. This identifies those areas that have growth potential. We spent a lot of time looking at this. We've identified areas that are kind of currently under construction in the pipeline and also areas that may still be vacant or farmland. And we were able to kind of identify how many students and units may come out of those. And so that's something that we kind of looked at throughout the process. We did look at our a student potential model, which could determine how many students we may have if we make some assumptions as far as what our growth looks like. I think what's very interesting about this information for Gehanna is that we show our current housing stock in this kind of green solid here. And this accounts for things like housing turnover. So if you build houses, people move in and then they age out and other families move in, they may not fill those homes back in at the same rate as they were when they were new. When we look at Gehanna, this is relatively flat. If we look at, if we look at a district like Olentangie where we have a lot of homes that were all constructed at the same time, this is much more of a pronounced decline in the existing housing stock. And so in Olentangie, if they didn't build a home, if they stopped building now, they would, they would essentially start declining due to turnover. Because we have a lot of older homes in, you know, in the school district here, that is resistant to that. So it's nice that we have that. You can see we've got the students that are coming from existing apartments and condominiums here in the red and the pink. And then you can see we released those new units in the orange, the yellow and the blue. And so the orange is the units that we know about. We know exactly how many units. We know where they are. And then once we get into those blues, that's when that farmland becomes released. And so you can see we show our enrollment peaking, you know, a little, you know, ninety three hundred and twenty six students and then kind of declining out to around eighty six, eighty five, or eight thousand, six hundred and eighty five students once everything is built out. And so that's based on our, essentially our current zoning that we have now. And that just kind of gives us a picture of what our growth looks like into the future. Guiding principles. This is a survey that we that we put out to the community to just get some high level feedback on some concepts around redistricting that we like to get that feedback before we we start naming names as far as areas that were changing and moving schools around. We want to try to keep this as objective as possible. This isn't surprising, you know. I'm not going to go through all of these, but attempt to create boundaries that assign students to their closest school that had a lot of support, attempt to create boundaries that prepare the district to grow with future minimal changes. Attempt to create boundaries that align feeder patterns. And then you can just kind of see how that looks when we look at some of those other other concepts. Now, it's not possible to align with every single one of these. As we went through the options, they aligned with these differently. But we wanted to give the committee kind of a barometer to kind of show them how the community might react to certain types of changes or rationale for those changes. As we go on to the overall options and feedback, we collected almost fifteen hundred total responses. And I can tell you many responses like their current schools and they don't want to change. This is something that we almost see universally across the country. Many respondents were surprised that replacing the Lincoln facility, you know, making it larger would have an impact beyond the area in and around Lincoln. Several respondents indicated that none of the options presented did enough to support the district's commitment to equity. And so those are just kind of some high level pieces of feedback that we that we saw. As we, as we look at the rest of it here, so this is our overall response. So again, we, you know, near fifteen hundred responses, many respondents like their current schools and that want to change. Many comments around allowing fifth and eighth graders to finish at their current school. We had a lot of feedback collected from Jefferson, Blacklick Elementary is an East Middle School. So this kind of shows you the breakdown of responses. And people could identify with more than one school. And so if you add all this up, it's not going to add up to that fifteen hundred because of that. This is the overall response. You can see we had more support for options four and five than we did options one, two, and three. And I'll go into that in a little bit more detail here. One thing that I like to do is when we drill down to these, to these results is I wanted to try to see if I could tease out some more objective responses. And so what I did is I filtered the responses on people that identified with the high school only that did not have any students in elementary schools. And so the the idea here was to see what does it look like if we look at a subset that maybe doesn't have as, you know, as much of a dog in the fight as far as the redistricting goes. I hate to use that term, but that's kind of what this was, what this kind of does come down to sometimes. So the table on the left shows all the responses and then the table on the right shows if we just filter those hundred and fourteen responses that meet this kind of loadout here. And so you can see we've got, you know, more support for option five. And, you know, less, less opposition to options one, two, and three. And so I think it was good to just kind of look at this and try to see, you know, a little bit more objective of a subset there. We went through this already, but this is the current boundaries and I'll kind of go through these options. I'm going to breeze through these because I really want to get through the recommendation. But this is option one. We show the the overall support here, you know, roughly eighteen percent strongly support seventeen percent somewhat support. And then you can see the opposition and you can kind of see how it breaks down by school. Here's option two, very similar. Here's option three, again, very similar. Option four, you can see we start to get more support here just because overall people tend to be more supportive of options for an option five. And here's option five. And if you remember, the only difference between option four and option five was this middle school change that kind of took this growth area that we looked at in those earlier slides where we showed, you know, that potential development. It took a lot of that growth area and pointed it towards south so that it wasn't all pointed at east. So out of the, out of the community engagement process, we had some lingering questions that we wanted to just make sure that we could provide some data for because we wanted to be methodical about this. One thing that really, that really came up, why can't everybody just go to their geographically closest school? Since we live in a world where we can put all the student data into a computer, we can have it run models for us. What we did is I plugged everything into the computer with the school locations. And I said, draw boundaries so that every student goes to his or her closest school. Do not pass go, do not collect two hundred dollars. And so that's, this shows what that looks like. And so you can see those, these don't really align to anything because it's purely looking at the road networks and what those boundaries would look like. And so I kept the colors consistent. So Blacklick in the green, Lincoln in the yellow, Goshen Lane in the red, Jefferson in the blue, High Point in the orange, and then Chapelfield in the purple, Royal Manor in the pink. And you can see if you, I'll see if I can zoom in just a little bit. You can see the existing boundaries are kind of ghosted here, just so you can get an idea of what those, what those boundaries look like versus the closest school. But the more telling thing when we look at this is what the utilization would be. So in this model, Blacklick could be eight hundred and seven students. High Point would be seven hundred and thirteen students, Royal Manor would be seven hundred and thirty nine students. And then we would have Goshen Lane at, at a hundred and thirty four students, Chapelfield at two eighty. And you can just kind of see what that imbalance looks like. And again, we wanted to just show what it would look like if everybody went to the geographically closest school. One of the other questions that that came out quite a bit is why can't we balance the socioeconomic better? You know, we had kind of a range at, at High Point Elementary of one percent socioeconomic disadvantage up to about six percent. And so what we did here is we kind of, I put together a grid to just kind of show how many students do we have throughout the district that identify as socioeconomically disadvantaged. And as you can see, we have, you know, a concentration, you know, in here, in this area of the district. We have another concentration down here a little bit, but we don't have huge numbers of students that are on, that are identified as socioeconomic disadvantaged. I think what's more telling is that we have areas where we don't have a lot of students at all that that would, that would fall, you know, that would be identified as economically disadvantaged. So kind of what we did is, is why can't we balance socioeconomic better? What would it look like? And this, this wasn't really an option. We just wanted to show conceptually what would have to happen in order to provide more of a balance. And so what we did here is, you know, this would be our, our High Point boundary. And so we would really have the areas right in and around High Point. And then we start to take those, those boundaries all the way to the west. And that gets our High Point percentage up to thirteen percent. And again, remember, right now it's one percent. If we look at Royal Manor and Goshen Lane, those are schools that have been a little higher when compared to the other schools. So in order to, you know, again, if we, if we think about those areas, particularly Royal Manor, we've got a concentration of students that are, that are identified as socioeconomic disadvantaged around here. The only way to really get that number down is to zone some students out and zone students that are more affluent in. And so what I did here is I took this area that's kind of north of, of, of Royal Manor here. And I've put that into Jefferson. And then I've taken this area here and put it from High Point into Royal Manor. And so you can just kind of see what this looks like. And if you look at the balance, we're eleven percent, thirteen percent, twenty three percent, thirteen percent. And, you know, it's, it's a little bit better of a balance, but you can see just what has happened, you know, what the complexity of those moves would be in order to make something like that happen. So now I'll go into the the final plan that we have here. We've broken it up into two phases, phase one, which should be implemented next school year, two thousand twenty one, twenty two, and phase two, the following school year. We'll implement. This allows us to incorporate new elementary additions into our capacity planning. And so looking at phase one, we're going to better utilize Lincoln with its new capacity. We'll be able to remove the detached zones. We'll be able to address capacity concerns and balance enrollment at Goshen Lane, Chapelfield, Royal Manor, and Jefferson. Will allow for High Point to stay well utilized until the addition opens. We'll split future growth between Middle School East and Middle School South instead of pointing the majority of it to east. And then we'll move the Rocky Fork area to Middle School East as well. Phase two will align the feeder pattern for that Rocky Fork area by moving students to Jefferson Elementary. They're currently at Goshen Lane. This will further reduce enrollment at Goshen Lane and will provide further relief with Jefferson and will increase diversity at High Point. Here are the phase one changes that would be effective next school year, twenty one, twenty two. I'll go through the changes on the map and then I'll go through the data on the table. So starting from the north, we have this area here in the orange that would move from Jefferson to High Point Elementary. This area here in the green would move from High Point to Blacklick. These areas here in the middle, this area would move from High Point to Jefferson. This doesn't include any students. This area here would move from Lincoln to Jefferson. This is that small percentage of Lincoln that goes to east and this cleans up that feeder split. This area over here in the the yellow color would go from Blacklick to Lincoln. This area down here in the green would go from Goshen Lane. This is one of those detached areas to Blacklick. This area in the yellow would go from Goshen Lane to Lincoln. So this removes those detached zones that we talked about on one of the earlier slides. To backfill the enrollment that came out of Goshen Lane, this area over here to the west of two seventy would go from Royal Manor to Goshen Lane. And then we have this area that is north of McCutcheon would go from Chapelfield to Royal Manor. Looking at the middle schools, this area that's kind of out to the east here, this would go from east to south. And then this area here, that Rocky Fork area that we talked about, this would go from south to east. Looking at the data, we show our utilization with portables. And so this is what the, what the enrollment would look like next year. Blacklick were at eighty three percent, Chapelfield eighty eight, Goshen Lane seventy two, High Point a hundred and nine percent, Jefferson and Lincoln are both at ninety four, Royal Manor at seventy two. Looking at the middle schools, a hundred and eight at east, a hundred and six at south, and a hundred percent at west. And that just really shows, you know, why we need that addition, those additions there. Just to go through some adjustments that we made to the original option five, this area right here, the the eastern portion of this, this is Stigler Road. In all of the options, we had this area moving from Chapelfield to Royal Manor. We made this adjustment to leave them at Chapelfield, you know, to kind of keep that well utilized. And it was easy to accommodate by Chapelfield's capacity and allowed us to have lower enrollment at Royal Manor. So that was really the only change that we had from option five as presented earlier in the process. Here's our phase two. So this is twenty two, twenty three, the only changes that we have here. We take the rest of this move, this piece here that we moved from Jefferson to High Point. And that allows us room in Jefferson to align this Rocky Fork area with Jefferson and east that we had moved the previous year. Looking at our, at our enrollment and utilization, seventy two percent at Blacklick with the addition. So it's poised to be able to absorb that growth. Chapelfield well utilized at eighty eight percent, Goshen Lane seventy five percent, High Point eighty nine percent, Jefferson ninety five percent, much lower than they are today. Lincoln ninety four percent, Royal Manor seventy two percent. And we're all pretty, pretty well balanced with the middle schools here, eighty five, eighty three, and eighty percent. Looking at the socioeconomic, we've gotten High Point from one percent up to six percent. And everything else is pretty close. I think it's plus or minus five percent from what it is today. So here's the, here's the new boundaries that you can kind of see in their entirety here. So we're using the same color scheme, but you can see how everything is aligned. So Jefferson is in the blue, High Point in the orange, Lincoln in the yellow, Goshen Lane in the red, Chapelfield in the purple, Royal Manor in the pink and Blacklick in the green. And you can see the middle school lines here. And so you can see we do have a feeder split at Blacklick, but this is just one of those things. We looked at, we looked at some scenarios where we could, you know, could we align Blacklick so that all those kids go to south? And it just didn't, it didn't balance utilization that we need, the way that we, the way that we needed it to, to account for that future growth. So as far as next steps, district-wide communication will be sent along with a recording of this presentation. We'll have targeted communication that will be directly sent to families impacted by the boundary changes. Phase one changes again will go into effect next year. Families of next year's fifth and eighth graders may submit an industry transfer application if they're interested in maintaining their students' current school. Information about the industry transfer process can be found on the district website. And the phase two changes will go into effect the following year in two thousand twenty two, twenty three. So that concludes my presentation. Jill or Steve, if you wanted to add anything? Steve, you're on mute.
Thanks so much, Scott. We know you and the committee and Jill Elliott, our assistant superintendent, worked really hard to listen to our community, to make the appropriate adjustments, to look at feeder patterns, enrollment patterns, and this plan is a phased-in approach and it really is necessary for us, right, to populate our new elementary school, Lincoln. And, and it also addresses as we move into phase two of our master facilities plan, we'll be able to populate those schools as those additions come online. So we really appreciate, I know there was many, many times where you made adjustments to this plan. So thank you so much for, for your hard work. I think we can open it up now for questions from the board.
I guess I'll go first. I can't tell who's on mute and who's not. But my, I guess my, my question that I have is more about how communication is going to be handled. So are we going to, I mean, I know that we'll, that there will be district communication to families who are impacted. Are we also going to put the maps somewhere? Like I am a person who I need to be able to like zoom in and look at the streets and are we able to put the presentation or the maps at least on the district website so that people who want to look at it in a really detailed way can do that soon?
Yes.
I will. I'll take that one, Steve. So we have a district-wide communication ready to go out tomorrow afternoon sometime. That will include a video presentation of this, you know, plan as well as a link to the school locator that was originally shared. So people could, could take a look there. Just with a special note that we do have that one adjustment to option five in the Chapelfield Royal Manor area. And then we also have a summary page that kind of summarizes all of this information in some simple bullets with maps aligned to phase one and phase two changes. And then by Monday of next week, we will be communicating with those families directly impacted to let them know, you know, which phase they'll be impacted in and what elementary and middle school boundary their home address aligns to. And so that's kind of how that communication will work. We do have information included that, you know, we have some students that don't attend their homeschool, the school that's aligned to their, their residence. And so there will be additional communication if there will be changes to any special programming that happens in the district. And so we, we note that also. So that's kind of the, the communication plan. We will also have the information on the website.
Yeah. You, you actually answered another question I was going to ask about special programming. So I think Mr. Hairston is unmuted. Did you have a question?
Yes, I was just wondering as, as far as like the transportation, the resources and things like that, those, those children who decide to do a transfer, would the responsibility be with the parents to get their kids to school or, or has the bus routes and things have been taken into account with this redistricting plan?
Yeah, that's a good question, Brian. And we talked a lot about that because we, you know, we want to be able to honor the next year's fifth and eighth graders to be able to stay in their current buildings. We are going to approve those, but they will run through our industry transfer process, which does not provide transportation to, to families. So they will be approved, but it will be based on transportation provided by families. We do not offer busing transportation for industry transfers.
I just have, I mean, an observation would be that, you know, equity could mean that you have equal percentages of income strata in schools, but by having lower census numbers in our two highest low-end income schools, that's, that's in essence a pathway to giving that, those students more attention from their teachers. So I think that is a good strategy, given that we can't do the geographic split while maintaining the homeschool approach. So I like to see those numbers lower than at some of the higher socioeconomic schools.
Thank you, everyone. Anybody else have any questions?
I just had a question regarding the involvement of the transportation department during the discussion. Can you kind of lay out how busing was discussed and, and what kind of impact we're seeing with these changes? How many additional drivers we may need? What kind of route changes we're going to be seeing? What, what, what has been discussed and what still needs to be worked out?
Yes. So I'm going to work on pulling up a chart that Jason Key, our transportation supervisor, sent to me. But I will say he was involved in conversations early on with the administrative team. And then he was looped in when we developed the five options and was able to take a look at all of them and determine as compared to our current routes, how many routes would we need to be operating with each of the options? They were all very compare comparative as far as the number of routes. I want to say that the option we landed on took us down two routes, but I, I want to double check that chart. chart before we solidify that. But Jason's been involved in looking at those routes and the buses that would be needed.
And a lot of that is just due to the, the increased access to the new Lincoln site when compared to the current site.
Thank you. My, my other question is, was there any discussion? And I, this is just out of left field. And so obviously we can shelf this for a future date. Was there any discussion about change of schedules for the elementary, middle school and high school level? We had discussed, we had brought that up within the last couple of years, but we did never, didn't have a, an opportune time to really make seriously consider a time schedule changes for the elementary, middle and high schools. I, I'm just throwing it out there. Obviously, if that's a discussion for another day, it is what it is.
Yeah, I think it probably is a discussion for another day. We didn't talk about adjusting start times in this redistricting process, but you're right. We have talked about it before. We've done some research and talking with other districts that have made some changes to their start times. Most of the districts that we previously had talked to did so because of transportation constraints. And so they went to a four-tier busing system, which then separates some middle schools and high schools with regard to their, their start times. So, you know, it, it has not been a part of this process, but we certainly, you know, it's still in a file right next to my, down in my bag.
I appreciate that.
I have one more question. As far as the plan itself, how much elasticity does it give us within the boundaries to where, I couldn't see the graph, so I don't know if this gets us 10 years, this gets us five years. And, you know, we will be doing it again in three years, whatever the case is, is there, I, I couldn't see on the graph, how, how much does it give us as far as growth potential within each school to get us down the road before we're looking at some other means to alleviate some of the growth in certain areas and others?
Can you see it now?
We can't.
Oh, oh, because I need to hit share. So how about now? Does it, does it look better now? Perfect. So we were, we were pretty intentional. We wanted to make sure that we, that we left as much capacity as we really could in Black Lick. Because that had the majority of the growth pointed at it. I wish that I could give you a, you know, I wish I could, I wish I had a crystal ball to tell you it's going to last five years or 10 years, but it's really all dependent on growth. But we were, we were methodical about making sure that we, we left capacity in there to absorb that growth so that we, we didn't have to come back here and, and do this again. And that was the other reason that we made that middle school adjustment so that we didn't have all of that growth pointed at middle school east. So, I mean, if we, if we, if we see growth like we've seen it in the last couple of years, I, I would hope that these are the last five years. But if, if something really explodes and, you know, it, it may be necessary to look at some possible changes.
Any other questions from anyone? I just want to say thank you to all of you and to our community members who served on the, the redistricting committee. I know it was a lot of work. I appreciate all of the solicitation of feedback. I think I was able to sit in on at least two of those Q and A sessions. And I appreciate that you took the time to answer people's questions. And that that feedback ended up getting worked into the, the final plan. I also, I guess just from a parent perspective, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and consideration given to those students who are at the transition points in the building. I mean, all of this. Like you said at the beginning, Mr. Barrett and Mrs. Elliott, this is, we, I mean, change is difficult. It's always difficult, but I appreciate that this plan takes, takes those students who are on those transition grades kind of into account. Thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. I, I think the committee deserves just all the credit in the world. They met seven different times, multiple hours, were part of the feedback sessions and really did listen to feedback. So there was a, a period of time when we were going to make the announcement at the, the March Board meeting. But we went back to the committee, the committee gave us feedback based on the input we heard in the community and adjusted the plan accordingly. And so, so you're right, Burl. I mean, it was a very deliberative approach and the, and the feedback was implemented into the plan. And I also want to thank our Board of Education because we've gone over this plan with you. You had some great suggestions. That's how we came up with the phased-in approach and looking at fifth and eighth grade transition grades. So this has really been a collective effort. And I want to thank Jill Elliott. This has been a very, very difficult project. Lots and lots of changes, lots of adjustments and lots of consideration, lots of phone calls, lots of emails. So thank you so much, Jill, for your hard work and dedication to this project. And you know, many districts across central Ohio nearby have, do this almost yearly. We're fortunate that we've been relatively stable and we haven't had to do this too much. But we're also excited about the growth over the next five, 10 years that we're going to get as we invite new families in. We know as families move boundaries, they'll, they'll, they'll build, they'll keep the relationships they've had and they'll build new ones. And, and we're very fortunate to be part of a community where people want to move and, and send their kids to school. And so I'm grateful for this work. I know it's very trying and it's a very difficult process. So we appreciate the community's patience as well because we took a lot longer than we planned to, to, to really deliberate over this and to think about things. So we want to thank the community for its feedback. We've had people in our meetings on Zoom, talking to us, giving us feedback. And all of that went into this final plan. So thanks very much.
Okay. Unless there is anything else that anyone wants to say about redistricting, we're going to move on to, we have a few action items under general business. Thank you. And Mr. Leopold, you don't have to stay with us for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to, but thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
I think we have three items for action under general business. Is there a motion to approve items number one through three under letter A, general business?
I'll move, Mrs. Chrysler.
Thanks, Mrs. Chrysler. Is there a second?
I'll move. Daphne Mauring.
Thank you, Mrs. Mauring. Any discussion about these items?
I'll just say that we need to widen the road at Helmbride to accommodate traffic patterns that are new Lincoln Elementary. So we're excited to get this work done. I, that's what the first item is here. And the second two items are surveys for all of the projects that are coming on board in phase two. So looking at our, our boundaries, our topography, property lines and those sorts of things. It's necessary before we begin this work. So that's what all three of these items are.
I, I remember reviewing the traffic study that was done when we were proposing Lincoln Elementary and this Helmbride widening was there. But there was also a request to have a turn lane added on Taylor. I believe it's Taylor Road onto Helmbride. And the city had agreed to put that in their street planning process. Do we know if that, I guess I should know as the government liaison. Do we know if that has been discussed or have you been approached by anyone at the city?
So not that part of it, Daphne. We were going to try to time this when the city was going to be working on Helmbride anyway. And, and maybe gain some savings, but it, it didn't quite line up that way. So we're doing this, this project. You know, out of the Lincoln Elementary budget, there will be two, the turning lanes are accommodated from our parking lot onto Helmbride, but I don't think that's what you're talking about. You're talking about something else. So no, I, I don't think that has been in the offing yet. I, I wish I would have had Scott here tonight and he could have given us an update on that.
Well, I just, with that redistricting map that we just did, there's going to be lots of buses coming from Reynolds Verdu Albany Road, Taylor, you know, to avoid the Havens Corner. And I think that's the issue that, that the volume counts were incredible. I don't live on that side of town, so I have no concept, but the recommendation for the turning lane, I thought was a prudent one. So.
Yeah, we'll revisit that with Scott and see where we are with that.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, Mr. Rillingo, can you call the roll, please?
It's Pickle Antonio.
Yeah.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Chrysler?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Mauring?
Yes.